Um trustee Ben here trustee Winkle Black. Trustee Christ.
Here.
Trustee Thali. Mayor Wilcox.
Here. Okay. Item number four. We have our Colorado intergovernmental risk sharing agency, SERSA. Board training. Which is presented by Nick Cotton. By S.
That's right.
Got that right. Associate General Counsel for SERSA.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I am SERSA's associate general counsel. I've been out here once before. Recognize some of you and I know some of your names, so we'll definitely have some. It will be a refresher for you guys and then, you know, we'll talk about some topics that might be new to the. The new ones of you and basically just an overview of. The following topics, we can go to the next slide. So we're going to cover today, um, the role of a public official organizational structure and liability, no problem. Um transparency, mainly the open meetings law. We're gonna talk about ethics a bit and we'll get briefly into due process requirements, bring up some topic. Um really, we're gonna focus on best practices to answer effectiveness and success in municipal federal. Um which will reduce the uh risks for the town and for you individually. Um and we'll get into that a bit more. You have to provide the disclaimer that this presentation is a training resource. It's not intended to provide legal advice, any specific pending issue, so. If I smell uh a weapon that seems to be pointed at a pending issue, I might not be able to answer that. But I generally will do as well say that and I will uh then provide you some valuable advice um that. That can uh sort of get you oriented to the issues at least. For the next slide. So um first principle here is committing to the role of a public official. Um being a public official means that your role has changed, right? Before you were a citizen and now you're a government official. Um and and that job really is one that's twenty-four seven, right? If you go out um around town, um you see other people, they're not gonna say, oh, you're not on the job right now. Um you're just a citizen. They're going to say. They're going to think of you as a trustee, right? Uh at all times when you're out there um in the world, so. Um it also means that you were an outsider before, maybe you championed some issues to get here on the board. Um to be elected, um but now if you're an insider, you have a responsibility as a, you know. Representative, the fiduciary of the town. And as an entity, so you have to care about all the issues faced out, not just those who ran. Uh so those are, those are uh examples of the changes that you undergo. And remember, you're always a public official in the eyes of the community, um so it's important, you can't really take that. Hat off, so it's important to follow the principles that we're going to talk about today and um because at all times since you. Are going to be viewed that way in. Part of your role as public officials littering good governance, um and that's based both practically and legally. On a few core concepts, um openness and transparency, we're gonna talk most about the open meetings law today, but there. There's also the open records law that I'm sure you're aware about and we can talk a little bit about that. Uh and fundamental fairness, that comes from the due process law of the US and Colorado constitutions. Mostly meaning that you owe somebody procedural uh. Due process when you're going through uh an application, you're deciding an application um. For specific individual or interest, um so those are things like liquor licenses, for example, in those instances. You owe the applicant due process and you might also owe um opponents due process as well, so members of the public who are against. Or are against the application, in those instances, you will owe them due process as well because they are interested in the application. Um and then predictability and even handedness, you know, you want. Your meetings, you want people to take away from your meetings that they were predictable, they didn't think. You didn't surprise them with anything that wasn't on the agenda, you didn't make any decisions that they weren't aware. Were coming up, um and that's an important thing, not only for legal compliance, but also uh for transparency purposes. And and that's really important at the local government. Um in local government realm. Um and then the usuality of respect, you know, you can be much more efficient if you, if you uh sit on this board and you respect. Everyone in the room, right? And that doesn't mean you're gonna agree with them on everything. Um and that's, that's fine, that's even encouraged, that's why you're part of the five member board. Um and not just one individual that makes the decisions for the town, um so there, there has to be that healthy level of complex. For consent of this building, um but all we ask is that you respect one another and do. Slide please. So um. A very important. Principle in risk management is swimming in your own lake. Um and that's respecting and honoring. As a trustee. Um that avoids risks of liability for the town organization and altering you um as a trustee, um because. Believe it or not, you can incur personal liability uh as a trustee um. If you are though um simply acting negligently, for example. Um meaning that you have some level of fault, but it's not that you're intending to uh cause damage. You have protection under Colorado government immunity hat, so it's not all bad news. Uh but you lose that protection if you are acting uh willfully and want. Um and basically what that means is that you're intentionally acting. Um not necessarily with the intention of causing harm to someone. But you're intentionally acting in a way that uh. That could have dangerous consequences and those consequences are likely to come out. Um so instances of local and wild conduct can be something like. Denying somebody a building permit, um when they requested that, when you haven't decided that in. In accordance with the facts developed at the hearing and with the code criteria, right? Um you know, it might be something like. Well, we don't like that person, um they've been coming into our meetings and and causing us a lot of strife um and. Uh so we're gonna deny their building part. If there are facts on the record that can establish that, or even not in the record of the hearing, when somebody brings a lawsuit against. Uh you individually or the town, in in those instances, uh you. You can be held liable um because you will not have protection. Uh so those are sometimes considered extreme examples of conduct, um it's willful, um and. It's not negligent, so it's something beyond that, um but another good example is uh. You know, when you're making statements uh about uh people in the community or things like that, you've probably heard the term slander, libel. Things like that, um in those instances. If you know that the information that you're sharing is false, um they call it publication, but really that just means that you're sharing. Information to the third party in the context defamation. Um and you know that information is false, but you're spreading it anyway, that is a willful act. Um because you have that knowledge and you're intentionally doing that, um and that can also weigh your government. Um so those are the two main examples, um you know, there are more extreme ones like assaulting somebody else at the town hall. Um which surely would weigh your immunity as a trustee and it would not be in your scope of employment um if you were doing that, so. Um really what that means, um all of this means that everyone needs to know and respect their job description. That's, that's how you stay within your scope, so where do you find that as a trustee? I mean primarily, it's in your orgs. Um it can be in some resolutions, it can be in a board code of conduct, your ethical codes, if you have a local one. Um things like that, if you can point to a power or duty that's in your code or any of those documents. Um then you will have that authority to act, if you can't point to something in those organizational documents that I mentioned, then you're likely not. Description. Um and remember that as a board, you're one vote of five, right? Um so you don't have any individual power as a board member, your power is in the collective and the collective decision making. Um so we talked about this, um but the personal liability use at the end is important too. Um you know, under the CGIA, the town is required to indemnify you, which basically just means it's required to defend and identify you. So if you're sued personally and you're acting within your scope of employment and um not willfully and wildly, just negligently. Um the town will identify you, provide your defense and it will pay your judgment, judgment center against you. But if you are not acting within the scope of your employment or acting willfully and wildly. You will be honored in those instances. Town might still offend you, um because that obligation comes first, but if it's determined in court that you acted locally and wildly. Uh the town is not going to pay your judgment. Uh so go to the next slide, please. So along with the immunity, um insurance kind of goes in. So if you have a loss of immunity, you're likely going to have a loss of insurance co- uh coverage. Because they follow the course and scope principles in the will of one. As well. Um so that's how most insurance policies are structured, including your SERSA liability. Um so when we're talking about immunity.
Uh do anything, right?
Maybe it'll come back.
Technical difficulty.
Me and this computer are not.
Yeah.
I didn't touch anything, so I'm hoping to.
Maybe it'll come back again, I got others, alright, well, so. The exceptions that we've been talking about, the local one, the course and scope. Uh that means that CGIA is qualified, it's not absolute shield, um or else it wouldn't have any exceptions, right? Um it also only protects against state law toward action, so toward action is brought under state law. Towards another negligence is the, the most uh common form of a toward action brought under Colorado law. And that just means that you had some sort of duty to somebody and you breached that duty, you know, uh maybe it's. Uh a duty to warn, um as people come into the town hall, this rug wasn't here, for example. And you didn't have a wet floor somehow, the floor was soaked and something tripped and fell, that'd be a good example of negligence. Um and you know, there is a waiver in the Colorado government. Yeah, for a dangerous condition of public building, um so you could actually, the town could be held liable. That's not likely to uh reach the trustee level, however, because. You know, you have the separation where you're the governing body, but the administration um is separate from the town staff. So it would likely be the responsibility of the town staff in those instances. Um but there is a form of qualified immunity that protects you from liability. Um under federal law as well, and you know, we call these federal. Um federal torts are uh typically. Uh brought under a statute under uh federal law, it's called nineteen eighty-three, and it has to do with you violating constitutional rights. The easiest example for trustees is somebody gets up here um and speaks a, and speaks to the board, a member of the public, for example. And they, they're cut off because you don't like their viewpoint. Um that would be a First Amendment violation and they could bring a claim under federal law. Um. You have protection from. Those federal torts insofar as the conduct does not violate clearly established statutory or constitutional rights, which a reasonable person would have known. So that is the meaning of that actual knowledge, it just means that you should have knew that you were violating this constitution rights. And basically, clearly established means that the case law, um interpreting the statutes or the constitution. Tells you that you have violated those constitutional rights. Um so the example that I just gave, somebody standing up here and you telling them stop because you don't like their viewpoint, maybe they're. Speaking about uh something that the majority of the board supports, they're speaking in opposition to it. Uh that's a clearly established constitutional right, so you would be held liable. So um. It's important to recognize that certain liability risks, particularly those civil rights claims, you know, um another example might be. You have a festival and somebody is carrying a weapon that they have the right to carry. Um and you tell them that they have to leave the festival grounds, well, that's happening, but we haven't established any. Sort of guidelines or limitations on that that are lawful. Uh then you could violate their second vendor rights in that instance, so um just, just as another example. But if there's civil rights claim, they can be exacerbated by bad facts, so you know, if, if it feels retaliatory, meaning, you know. They've shared their viewpoint and they know you didn't like it and that's, that's why they were uh punished in the way that they were. Or told to sit down, um then in those instances, those bad facts can increase the supply. Next slide, please. So. These are some other examples of liability risks that um lie uh. For elected officials and elected governing bodies, you know, we have those. Those civil rights claims, First Amendment, due process is another one, liquor license example where you have specific criteria. You know, the needs and desires of the neighborhood, you've heard about them, for some shore, or you know, there's. Uh you know, there can only be, maybe you have limitations on the amount of liquor licenses that come into the town. You have to make those decisions, not just out of thin air, but based on the criteria that you have in the code. Um and or else you could engage in a due process violation. Equal protection is one where uh you know, there are suspect classes, right? Race is a good example, you know, if you deny somebody a right um because of their race and they can prove that. Then um you'll have an equal protection violation and that will most likely occur in the employment realm um when it comes to local governments. Um not to say that it will happen here, um but it, it does, it does. Um and so there's. Also employment practices, we kind of talked about that briefly, but um you know, there's harassment, discrimination, retaliation. Uh which are. All um potential for liability, particularly if as an elected official, you tell him a person on that, so they're not authorized to, to deal with. Um and we'll get into that more, um local one, what she talked about, breaches of ethics and fiduciary duties. Um your fiduciary duty as a board member is to place the interests of the town above those who are. So if you have that personal agenda, but the board has decided. I decided in, in favor or in opposition to your personal agenda, then you have to live with that. And you have to move on with the majority consensus and um that is. You sure you do. Open meetings and open records law, one oh six eight four challenges, which are. In that liquor license example, if somebody doesn't like your decision, you did make it in accordance with the code criteria and the facts developed at the hearing. They will appeal that to the district court. And in those instances, if you don't have sufficient evidence on the board to deny that record lessons. Then they can overturn that decision and remand it back to you to make that decision again. Um which can be pretty cumbersome to do. Um and they get awarded the first. For somebody who prevails, which can get quite expensive. Uh declaratory or rejected relief claims, which are claims that don't involve a request for damages, no request for money, it's just. Somebody is trying to get you to do something or stop you from doing something. Maybe an ordinance you pass is unconstitutional and they petition the court for declaratory relief. So that the court will say it's unconstitutional and for an injunction to say you can enforce, that's a good example of. Declaratory and injunction. Uh and then contract and quasi contract types, you don't have immunity. So you know, if you, if the board enters into a contract and you don't honor that. You're sued for breach of contract, if the, if the contractor prevails in that action. Uh you don't have immunity for that, so you're gonna have to pay that judgment um out of the town's coffers. And then um takings and regulatory taking claims, you know, this, this is where you take somebody's property. Um purportedly for public use without paying them just compensation for it, you know, maybe it's an easement, right? And you're just, you're saying, well, we need this easement on your property, we're gonna take it, we're gonna. We're gonna go ahead and build a water line through it. If you don't pay them for that, then they have a taking claim. Next slide, please. And I should say, if you guys have any questions throughout, please do. So um. Supporting the town structure, you know, what is that, first of all, and what's the board's job description? You have to understand your jobs, job description in order to understand the town structure. Coburn is a statutory town and you have a board administrator in form of government. Um you're, the board is the governing body, you make big policy making decisions. Um you pass ordinances, you set town's budget. And then you have your administrator, um who is responsible for uh the day to day um. Overseeing the staff, implementing your policies, um so. You pass them, you hand it off to the staff, they implement it, that's the most basic way to explain it. Um this is the most common form of municipal government, there, there are other forms, um you know, one being a strong mayor form that Denver has. Um where the mayor serves as an executive branch, kind of like the, the president, um and. Uh has a bunch of agencies below him and in the executive branch, the city attorney's office, they have. You know, all sorts of departments, they're all under the executive branch, but your government is not structured like that, obviously a lot smaller. And you have your governing board and you have your administration and that's really it, there's no separation of powers um. Between an executive and the legislature. Uh so I, I do want to remember the public, right?
Yeah.
Uh member of the public, yeah, I have to reserve the questions. Yes.
That, I've, I've come across that since. And people have viewed it. And just what, and what you just said, since I was elected mayor. The competent amendment, you're the mayor, you can do anything you want, I said, no. I'm one person on a five member board. That we make a decision or we're advised in a certain way. And then we make a decision as a group and then the staff carries it on. You know, uh. Accuses her, I mean. It did happen, as you say. Thirty-three years ago, I believe. That our mayor uh. On the street, I had a little discussion with. Our marshal at the time. And so he just made a decision and said, you're fired. Well, he came back and. She sued the town for wrongful termination.
Right, right.
Uh I want, and, and then came to, and I came to the meeting that night. And said, oh, by the way, I fired the marshal. Not too cool, but. Lesson learned.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and those are instances where the mayor didn't have authority to do that and, you know. You are required and protected by your personnel policies, so if you don't have it in accordance with those personnel policies, then. Uh the town can be held liable, you can be held personally. So that's a good.
Yeah, I, I just, I've had to remind people that, no. I'm not a watchdog, I'm not the boss. I am but one person on the board. So.
And that's empowering, is, is you know, to, to be able to say that and to say that you're in this building. Body um in that. The body has the interests of the constituents in mind, but the mayor, just like the rest of the trustees are elected and. Um you know, you all have an equal say on this board. Sets. Um so yeah, we talked about this, the legislative and governing body, that's what you are, um you have the corporate. That's then vested by statutes in, in the town. Um and basically that's policy and governance and we talked about. You know, you, you set the local laws, uh you set the town's budget, you determine what the town can pay for every year. Uh the mayor is the presiding officers. Officer, the same voting powers as any member of the board, um so that's right in your code. Uh and then the town administrators is the chief administrative officer, um you know, if you, you worked in a private sector at some point, a corporate role. Then it's most likely to a CEO in some ways. Um and they're responsible for the administrative day to day and. Um you know, the town administrator is your director, right? So you do have um you know, supervisory authority over the town administrator. And I know that you guys are in transition right now. Looking for another town administrator, um. And uh but uh what I will say is, you know, you, you have that person directly reporting to you, so you supervise them. But unless you have any other direct reports, the town administrator is the one that supervises that. Um everyone, so. Um and that's, that's an important point because if you are directing people below the administrator, then you're not acting in the course of your deployment. And we do call it employment, even if you're a board member, um and you're elected. And you. Don't serve with the compensation like a sap in the room, um but yeah, you. The town administrator is the one that is responsible to you and you think of them like a CEO in a boardroom, you say, this is what we want done. Go out and do it, and that's, that is typically how it works, so.
So is there a particular resolution or? Um statement. Within our ordinance saying that this is a board administrator government?
Um this, these statements in all these citations right here um amounts to that essentially. You know, we have the separation in the contrast between the chief administrative officer, which is in the code. And the legislative and governing bodies, so those, that contrast sets up the town, um the. Board administrator. Essentially.
What I, what I would like to know is if. The board collectively. Gives direction to. Our administrator or our CEO. That. Say we have a head of maintenance or we have. Ahead of our law enforcement. That. If, if there's a. Something that, that comes up. They need to bring it. To the board to. So that we're. All on the same page directly rather than just. Telling them what to do and how to do it, so to speak, when. When, I'd say the head of maintenance. And our law enforcement, they're, they're trying and they have the expertise and so. In the past, serving as a trustee. That's, that's all that I asked was. They're the experts and if, if they have something in concern, I would, I'd rather than bring it to the board. And then the board give director, uh directed to the administrator as to how to handle that, not. I mean, I don't. Some people, they use, I don't like the term, but micromanage.
Right, right.
I don't want to micromanage anybody, I don't want to tell anybody how to do their job. But a healthiest uh. Working relationship amongst the staff, I have to tell you, it was really refreshing earlier today. Uh I came in, I was asked to come down and sign some papers. And it was. Just a total different atmosphere, Dusty was here, uh everybody was working together. Mike came in, was working with Dusty, as he was doing his first thing, Arla came out to help. It was great.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the type of collaboration that you want and uh among your staff and yeah, I think. If I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, Mayor, sometimes there is a, there could be a gap between. You know, your knowledge as board members um in what staff knows, um you know, and the. Public Works Manager as an example, or the, the marshal, um you know, there are certain things that are handled at the administrative level. Um but there are also things that should be brought to the attention of the board. Um and you know, when you look at your ordinances, we talk, you think about the corporate authority that's vested in you and. Your legislative authority, a good uh example of corporate authority is you are um. Your legislative authority, a good uh example of corporate authority is you are um really, you have control over all town resources, right? Uh and you make decisions about town resources, money, um property, real and personal property, vehicles. Things like that, you know, so if there are issues when it comes to that, you know, it's the board, right? Um when there are issues like a, you know, maybe a fire item um starts uh. Blows up, I don't know what fire artists do, but and starts spraying water everywhere. You know, that's something that typically the public works director would just handle and that would be fine. So finding those um. You know, finding the more difficult uh situations, the gray area. And letting your expectations be known about that um as far as what the board needs to know, wants to know in those instances. Is, is certainly encouraged and you know, you can implement whether it's a written policy or whether it's. Just stating your expectations in the meetings for what types of issues you want reported to the board um can really go a long way. Um the only cautionary thing is, when you do that, you wanna make sure that while you're receiving those reports. Uh if they're coming directly from someone working below the town administrator, you don't want to direct them. Um right, yes, yeah. So it is, it is tricky. Um and again, I mean, really. Bottom line is, when something's not being done um among the staff that, that you want done. Your town administrator is responsible for that to you. So um that's really the bottom one. Um as, as far as that goes. So you know, if, if it, it's not getting done the way you want it to get done, then. The town administrator is responsible to you.
So if I understand this correctly, if um. I see some that I don't agree with. The employee of the town is doing. That I think needs stress. Do I bring that to the board or do I take that to the. The administrator and then let them decide if they wanna bring it to the board? Or for whatever reason.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. Um it's a little nuanced. So. When you as an individual board member see something that you don't like um. Typically, in order to, to take any action, to provide any direction to the town administrator, you're gonna need. Board consensus. Um you're gonna need a majority um consensus before you can provide any direction to the administrator. To correct that employee's action, right? Um but when it comes to. A, something that you just see and observe and you just wanna bring it to the town administrator's attention, but you're not requesting any type of action necessarily. You just say, hey, I saw this occurring. Um and I'm not sure whether that was right or didn't look right to me, just wanna make sure you're aware. That's perfectly fine to bring to the administrator. Um so long as you're not um providing her, him or her with any directions. Uh yeah, yeah. But you know, if you do wanna provide direction, that's when you have to bring.
So, so in, in other words, if you have a concern and, and you believe it needs to become before the board, you can request. That the administrator bring that before the board so that we're all on the same page.
That's right. And that's a key point, cause think about it as from the administrator's perspective. Can you imagine having five different people telling you five different things that they want you to do? And if you haven't gotten that consensus from the board, they're not gonna know what they're supposed to, right? And, and that puts them in a very difficult position. And you as a board have the responsibility to make sure your direction is. Clear and it's um given through proper procedure, which is, you know, consensus, opinion, um votes. In the meeting before you provide that direction to the administrator.
I guess I'm still confused about is on that question there or answer. It still has to be brought to the town administrator for them bring that. Such up more for this question.
Right, right. Yeah, and I, I don't know your agenda setting procedures.
Why?
Yeah.
I just, you know, I, I didn't want to step on it.
Sure, sure. Yeah, but there.
Town administrator and tuck them birds.
Well, technically, you know, I don't know if you've got local procedures for that, but you know, I. If, if they're absent any procedures to the contrary, you know, it would be appropriate to talk to the town administrator if you saw something. A staff member doing something that you didn't think was right. Um but. You can't tell the administrator or do anything about it. So if you want, if you want to provide direction and you think that you should. Um then, and that is, you wanna try to get it on the agenda. And that's where um your local procedures might come in or, or you know, I don't know how you guys do it.
We have no local procedures. We don't have. We don't have anything, but I think it's all being worked on.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's great. When those things become clearer, it'll become easier. Um and yeah.
Suggestion.
Right, right. Well, in the meantime, you know, I think absent any procedures, uh. You know, you talk to somebody who can get things on the agenda, the core of the administrator, and they'll, they'll make it happen, you know, and. You know, you have to be respectful of the, the time, the timing things too, you know, maybe I have a full agenda and it has to be. But they all understand the urgency of it um and help you do it. Okay. Yeah, of course. Um go to the next slide, please. So this is more about um, you know, your, your role as the board. You know, you've got your policy, policy setting, big picture, forward-looking authority. You know, you're thinking about. Uh policies that might guide the town way in the future, um when you guys are legislating. Um and you're not being as reactive in, in uh. You know, taking things as they come as issues arise, ideally anyway. Um you know, I've seen some towns have to be reactive because things change so quickly. Um short-term rentals, for example, kinda came out of nowhere and then all of a sudden. Uh especially, you know, mountain resort communities were very inundated with them and housing prices skyrocketed. So they're doing all sorts of emergency ordinances and things like that to try to uh rein that in. Uh but typically you wanna try and be ahead of things as much as possible. Because if you start being reactive in the ordinance uh. In, in adopting ordinances, then somebody can say, oh, that was about me, right? And you don't want that to be the case. You don't want somebody to feel singled out. Um because then you could run into some of those larger issues like equal protection violations. Um and maybe even First Amendment violations if we think it through and, you know, uh. Things that can get you in trouble and, and incur liability, so. Um examples of this, we've already talked about these, um but you know, decision regarding corporate assets for the real estate and the vehicles. Um in the vehicles example that I gave earlier, um and then your director. So the town administrator, uh those were the instances where you do get involved in personnel matters to some extent. Um in providing directions to the town administrator and having her an answer to you, so. Um and then, so you do have the longest timelines, you're looking down route, you have broad interests in minds. In mind, uh and you're working together, you're, you share your role to protect the town and then the, the board as an institution. You know, you guys, whether you like it or not, are gonna come and go, right? But this board is gonna remain here. And you're a part of it now, but others will be part of this future. So you wanna try to uphold the integrity of the board as an institution. Cause they'll be around a long time. Uh next slide, please. So um it's particularly important to adhere to the organizational structure that we talked about. The board administrator form of government or the policymaking versus administrative function, both the same kind of thing. Um in the area of employee relations, employment, uh personnel matters. And those are typically assigned to staff, right? Um your town administrator typically has the ability to uh direct the staff members that work. Under and um and also to make decisions about hiring and firing, things like that. Um so because those have been delegated to the administrator. You can't now act and get involved in the area first. Uh so if you do that, you're acting outside the course of your employment and that's where you can wager immunity protections. Um your best immunity protections are in the legislative realm, which, you know, ordinance passing, budget setting. And quasi judicial realm, where you're making land use decisions or legal license decisions. Um bill issuing, billing, things like that, if the board is retaining that authority. But if you delegated it down um to the administration, then it has to remain.
Can staff create, can the administrator create a whole new position and fill it?
That depends on what your delegations say. Um you know, it would be your code or your, your personnel policies. Typically, uh delegations are made through documents, right? Uh yeah, so it's, if it's, another thing is maybe there's been some approval for that budget. If you guys don't pass it in budget, um then there might not be money to actually create that position, right? So you do have authority in, in that.
Well, we just kinda wanted to see as a board, like if a position is created, let it be posted publicly, not just like. Bring somebody on and fill this position and not talk to the board and this and that.
Yeah, and I, I will have to, in those instances, kind of defer to your documents.
Yeah, we don't really have it.
Okay, okay. Well, I think in, in that instance, then, you know, it might be appropriate to have that discussion. Uh you know, with the, as soon as the administrator and then. Discussion and set forth your expectations, you know, absent the documents, say, one word.
So, so what happens here, say, uh somebody comes in and they know. That if they wanna do something and it's in an easement, uh a utility easement. However, it's been well established for thirty years and there's nothing there, so. They would like to come before the board, just like you're standing and say, this is what I'd like to do. And I'd like to extend, so it might. Be permanently attached to the back of my garage, but yet it will, it would. Go into an easement and ask for a variance, which happened to our home. Before we purchased it. A couple of owners before us because, you know, things were already established and what uh and.
Right.
So the variance was given, but then you have an administrator that. Refuses to let that citizen come speak to, to the board to ask either for a variance or say. Somebody uh maybe not maliciously, maliciously, but kids fooling around, come up and turn on a water spigot. And so water's running down the road, the owner doesn't know it and, you know, as a neighbor, you go turn it off and let them know. Then they come in and, you know. Ask to, on the agenda, ask for forgiveness of part of the water bill because they had no knowledge of. You know, things like that, but.
Right. Well, typically, a lot of times codes will address issues like that. If your code doesn't, then my suggestion would be to look at the statutes. Um when it comes to variances, the. Board of Adjustment, who I don't know who serves as that in your town, whether it's Planning Commission or the board itself. Um but if there's, if there is a request for a variance, the Board of Adjustment is required to provide a variance. In instances where there's hardship that's demonstrated. And you know, hardship typically has to do with topographical concerns or it has to do with uh something peculiar about the property. That would cause them not to be able to comply with zoning um to be able to, in order to use their property effectively. They cannot comply with the zoning, that's a hardship. And the Board of Adjustment is required to provide a variance in that instance. Um but they have to prove the right, can't be an economic, purely economic reason. They can't say, oh, without this uh. Without this extra water line, um you know, I'm going to, I'm going to lose uh value in my house. I can't sell it, something like that. Um that purely economic reason um won't necessarily get you there. So there are specific criteria in the statutes and sometimes borne out in local codes that address. When it comes to the other issue of asking for um sort of a, a one-time pass. I'm paying an exorbitant water bill that wasn't somebody's fault. Uh the statutes address that too. Um and typically an ordinance will as well. Um but there's uh typically what the ordinances will, local ordinance will say. To give a one-time pass, right? If you have, if you have that instance where there's a leak, you didn't know about it. Um you gotta repair it promptly, um then, okay, we're gonna give you that, we're gonna give you that pass, we're gonna charge you a, a normal rate. Um based on what, if your code is, based on what historically you've used during that time period.
Where should that be in the code?
Uh you know, sometimes I, it depends on, on, a lot of times they're in. Chapter thirteen, I don't know why, um but it has to do with water and sewer. Okay, yeah, yeah, well, your sewer provisions.
Oddly enough, I've read every sediment I could get my hands on. And years ago, somebody would come and approach the board and say, I had an extraordinary. Circumstance and got this eight hundred dollar bill and, and the board would forgive it. But then now citizens are telling me, one lady said, maybe four years ago that. She had um like a six hundred dollar bill in December, not, not during grass watering season.
You're right.
And um she called town hall, they said um tough titty pay it. And they, she wouldn't let, no negotiation at all. And she said um, they sent out the public works guys to see if she had a leak. There was no leak. Her husband crawled under her house, the guys crawled under the house. Nobody could find a leak. There was no reason, her, it was obviously a clerical error. And they wouldn't work with her or allow her to talk to the board. So I'd like, we need to look into that ordinance, Dusty.
Well, and I think that's, that's, that is the major point, right? You know, if you have, if you're lacking policies on that, the.
Right.
First step is to implement some policies and view your ordinances and figure out the ways that you wanna address that. There's some great examples out there from towns and source of concern.
And I have done before the board, in behalf of neighbors, uh it's probably been fifteen years ago, but. The, the property at the end of uh Spring Street, there's a little cul-de-sac and, and the church had a two-inch tack. However, when. The tap was installed, there was no valve to turn it off. There was a freeze in the spring, the water broke and. Ended up being a twenty-five hundred dollar bill, so. I asked to be on the. Agenda, spoke to the board. The board gave, gave a directive because there was no way to turn the water off. Without turning it off to the, the whole block or part of the subdivision. They did, instead of forgiving the bill, they credited that to, towards their future. Waterville's, the board made a decision that, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and just. As you use water, we'll deduct that until it's, it's worked out.
Yeah.
You know.
I think the way to do it.
So.
Yeah. Well, I think that, that raises another good point too, Mayor. Um you know, it sounds like there have been some case-by-case decisions that have been made. Um and some people have. Uh some people have been granted um some sort of reprieve and some have not. That's all, it's all the more important because of that fact that you guys get some policies.
Correct, cause if you do, you gotta do for the other.
Yeah.
If not.
That's the open-handedness.
We, we know that we have a, a sewer system that we need taken care of and redone in the future. And, and just another example, uh and it was years ago, uh. The family over on Gold Creek. They were still, they, they had paid for water and sewer taps. So, and they had hooked up to the town water, but the town was trying to force them to hook up to the sewer. And so, just being a citizen, even though they knew that I was on the board before, I said, can you please go? Speak to the board in behalf, so. I came to the board and said, but does it make sense to make them pay fifty thousand dollars when they're? When their septic and leach field is still working? And. From what I understand, there's a state statute that says as long as it's still functional and not failing. That the board can't, or the town can't. Force them to hook up at this point, you know, with a lift station and boring the road and this and that, so. And that, my thing was common sense is if we know we already have a sewer problem. Or need to upgrade, why would we put that extra load as long as their system is working? Now, once it fails, according to county code, which is, you know, what we follow in building codes and sites. Then. Then it has to be updated and that has to be done, but. And they went ahead and backed off and said, okay, that makes sense, and didn't, didn't force him to.
And I think that's, that's another good point that sort of drives home the, the importance of having those policies in place, just because, you know, if. If there are instances, wherever you feel like you're, when somebody specifically requests something, whether it's one person. A representative of business, um, whenever you feel like you don't know how you're supposed to make that decision. Some red flags go up in your mind, um, and. Really what that is almost always going to mean is that you need some policies in place, you need some criteria. Um, on which you can make your decisions, right? So, um, if there, if there are those instances where you feel like you're having to ad hoc, um, decide. A request or decide whether you even let them come in. Um, then that's an instance where you gotta get those policies in place and you gotta. Uh, make those decisions based on those policies once you have them, so, yeah. Um, time do we have until, cause it's already seven? Okay.
I thought we were told three hours.
Well, I won't keep you that long, um, and definitely be under two hours, I think it'll probably be closer to that. Um, but, um, moving on, I think, uh, thank you. So, sporting, so we do have these relationships that are addressed in your code. Um, and we try to, we already had a vision about the board, um, but the administrator, you know, you can see administrators, personnel. Part of establishing the personnel rules and regulation. Subject to approval by the board trustees, so that's where you have some more authority when it comes to personnel issues. You can't be waiting into them in a, in a way that you're reaching down low at town administrator. But you can set the town's personnel policies. Um, the administrator will typically be the one that suggests them to you, that brings them before you. But you have the ultimate authority in order to adopt that. Say, you need to go back to the drawing board, so keep that in mind when you're feeling a little bit helpless when it comes to. Personnel issues, you actually do have a lot of authority, but it's forward looking, um, you gotta have those in place. Well, before you're gonna be making those decisions, otherwise you can run this personnel issues because you're being reactive, right? If you adopt something and somebody says, they obviously did that just because of me, then you got a problem, right? So you would have that in place well before something bad happens. Um, and then, so there's another provision that says that the town, um, administrator points supervised with the discharge of all department heads. Employees, so that's, that's where the, and I know that, um, we were talking about that earlier, then. In mind, but it is in, um, books. Um, so tips to support structure and avoid concerns about role discipline scope. Um, you wanna respect the delegations of authority are in need, um, and we talked about. Uh, the, the personnel policies in the code that those delegations that we just talked about and personnel matters, the. The town administrator having that authority, that came from the board at some point, right? Cause it's in your ordinance. That I knew the institution of the board, not personally, and before your time, but that's how the board is. Um, and it, and it's the one we see most commonly, typically the most. Um, those kind of allocate or allocations, um, were to serve and protect the town for the town elected officials. But they have to be honored, or else they do nothing, right? Um, and in fact, if you don't honor them and they're on the books, that's worse than if they weren't on the books and. And you acted in the way that you did. So, once you have something on books, you gotta follow it, cause that's the easiest way for a judge to say. You did something wrong, um, cause you printed it down, right? Um, and if you don't follow them, then you have a liability risk. Another, uh, delegation, uh, do you guys have a purchasing policy or anything that says that the administrator can? Uh, maybe purchase goods up to five thousand.
We, we know not, we know nothing.
Okay, well, that's, that's okay, um, you know, maybe you don't wanna delegate any authority like that. Maybe the board does wanna approve purchases, even those under five thousand.
At one, at one point for the department heads, they, they still reported to the town administrator. Uh, or the clerk and recorder, but the department said had a budget of. X amount, if, if there were certain purchases, say for. Ammunition or to keep up with their certifications, um, you know, say it was eight hundred dollars. Then they didn't have to come to the administrator to ask or the board, but if it was over that, then they would come to the administrator. And the board and request, say, this is why I need this piece, piece of equipment or. These supplies.
Yep, and that's, that's how we see it a lot, you know, cause sometimes the board's like. Well, we already approved this through the budget in one way or another, so as long as you're not going over your department budget, then we don't need to see it. Um, other boards are more hands-on, or they'll say, we wanna see every single contract and approve every single contract regardless of price. Or we wanna approve, better yet, we wanna approve all the purchases before we even get to the. So there are multiple ways to skin the cat. Um, again, just encourage you to, you know, write those policies down, um, to make sure that they're uniform. If it's not broke right now and you're okay with the way things are going, maybe that's not a priority, but. You know, if, if you are seeing issues of purchasing or contacting, uh, services, goods, whatever it may be. Then you might wanna think about implementing some financial purchasing policies. Uh, another one is your role as a group, uh, role, you know, if you're thinking about acting individually, you shouldn't. Because you don't have authority to act individually, you're just one member of the board. Um, but recognize that that's still a lot of power, right? Vote with you, then, you know, you could have less majority, so. Um, while you don't have authority, so you do have a lot of power. Uh, and then recognizing that elected officials act primarily as a group and exercise responsibilities. Mainly by voting in a public meeting. Um, you know, you don't really have any other authority to act, um, in your official capacity as a trustee, except by vote. Um, and that's, that's really what it comes down to. If you're acting, um, without a, a proceeding vote, uh, then you probably didn't have the authority to do that. Um, so you want, we want you as a, so we want you to think in terms of we, not in terms of I. And if you find yourself thinking in terms of I, then that's probably a good flag. Um, because just remember that consensus building body, the majority consensus. So, um, letting you commit to personal conduct that strengthens that we, the governing body is an institution. And sometimes that requires first sacrifice. You may have, everyone has a personal agenda, right? We can say that, um, you know, some things you want to happen in the town. Um, and maybe, maybe the board doesn't support that, maybe you're the odd person now. And since, you know, after there's been a majority vote, you have to kind of live with that. Um, you know, the town has decided a direction that doesn't conform with your own personal agenda. Um, and this is an instance where you, you gotta live with that. And we see that at all levels of government, right? You might even elect people that don't do what they say that they're gonna do for us, in, in those instances of the property that, you know. That we can do with our forms of government. Um, accepting that the board has spoken, though one prefer a different outcome, that's just another way to say whatever is said there. Oh, yeah, okay. But, um, and then. The, we talk about when your work is done, right? There's a handoff that happens, you pass an ordinance, for example, um. Let's say it's something that, that regulates, uh, the ability to place, uh, structures and. A, uh, first piece of real property, maybe you're allowed to have a shed and attached garage on the property in addition to your primary residence. Um, you pass that ordinance, then there's a handoff, you're not going out and enforcing that ordinance. That's your code enforcement policy, or which might be the, the mark, right? Um, and in those instances, that, that's where you have made the handoff. Um, that could use in personnel matters as well, right? You delegated some authority to the administrator, so after you adopt those personnel policies, um. In those instances, you gotta let the town actually carry it out. Uh, recognize that there are one board of five, sorry about that, not five words one. And then you wanna avoid perceptions of getting ahead of or speaking for with the board. Spoken, maybe the easiest example is speaking to the media, you know, if you have something that's coming up. Uh, before the board, the media gets wind of it, they're even going to attend the meeting. Um, they call you ahead of time, maybe it's the mayor, most likely, call you up and they ask you, you know, your personal feelings, what way is the board? You think the board's gonna go, you don't wanna be answering those because you could, uh, you could approve a violation of the open meetings law, right? You say, well, I know, the board's gonna go this way because I spoke to Bill and I spoke to Gary. And you know, in those instances, that's where you're more trustees, talking about public business, the public president. And that is in open meetings law, but maybe even more practically. Uh, you, it's really hard to put the cap back in the bag, so mayor goes and makes some statements about which way mayor thinks. Things are gonna go, and then the board decides differently, you got all these people who were anticipating the opposite. And that can be really problematic. One step further, if you make statements purporting to have the authority to make them. You know, maybe you have the backing of the board, you believe, you go out and make statements and somebody relies on those statements, they're detrimental. And maybe goes ahead and spends money on something, and then the board decides that. The opposite, and you spent all that money and now you can't do, you can't achieve the ultimate goal, where you can put those funds for. And that can create a lot, it'll be, um, in a quasi contract. So, uh, the third principle is honoring the openness clause of the, our open meetings law. Basically what that says is that the discussion by three or more trustees of public business must occur at a meeting open to the public. Um, if action will be taken or a quorum, quorum will be present. Then twenty-four hours notice has to occur by January of state. A quorum is in your instance, um, with five members, it's the majority, so three. So you can actually conduct business if you have three or more trustees present in the room. Um, and in that case, you have to post notice for the meeting. Um, because there's a quorum present, you can actually vote on things, um, and that voting is action. Um. Using email, I think there is a handout that, that we've included, um, in the materials, I think you might have received it by email. Um, and I, I encourage you to take a look at that, um, because it's kind of important, but. Email is another instance where you could actually be holding the meeting. So same with a telephone, same with a, a video call, same with social media. Um, and messaging apps.
Yeah, group texting.
Yeah, signal what that, uh, group texting, any of those, um, doesn't matter which one it is. You could violate the open meetings law if you have three or more trustees in that discussion. Because the public wasn't invited to attend and observe what you're talking about. You know, the Colorado legislature does signal quite a bit, um, and that has become their app of choice and the, uh. And there was recent legislation allowing you to do that, they're supposed to still honor the requirement that, you know, discussion. Uh, legislation, um, in the case of the state, with two or more. Legislative officials has to occur in public, uh, but they somehow created a department to that. That does not exist for local government officials, um, so even if your messages are gonna be disappearing the next day. Um, you know, they are still, uh, they are still subject to the open meetings law and you could run afoul of. But the open meetings law, you engage in those types of messages. Um, so keep that in mind and then also keep in mind, if somebody suspects that you violated the open meetings law, what are they gonna do? They're gonna hit you with a court request for all of your, all of your messages, and they're going to try and prove that meetings law violations happens all the time. And trustee correspondence in almost all cases is a public record that is subject to disclosure. Uh, under the Colorado Open Records. That is regardless whether it's on your personal device or one that's owned by the town. Uh, so, you know, if you're using your own personal phone to conduct town business, then you could have your. You could have your messages taken from your phone, um, typically you're asked to voluntarily disclose those, so you might not have your phone taken. But, you know, it could be something where you're, you're sending over messages to the town custodian records to then disclose those to the public. So another important principle is just to say, well, don't say anything in an email that you wouldn't wanna see on the front page of newspaper. Because, uh, in, in a lot of cases, uh, when you have an open records request, that's where it's gonna, it's gonna be in the newspaper, so. Um, yeah, that's a, that's an important thing, so, uh, and then transparent, other transparency related risks when it comes. Texting, social media, et cetera, um, social media is a tricky one because. You guys are, um, public officials, right? So if you open your social media pages to, uh, to comments, um, and you hold yourself out as a trustee. Or the mayor in those instances, then, um, you now have to follow the First Amendment. Um, and that is, that's tricky to do, um, as an elected official because you're essentially opening yourself up to some criticism. So what the First Amendment basically says is. Or how it's been interpreted, in, interpreted in social media context. Is that if you have opened your social media page up to comments from citizens, you're holding yourself out as an elected official. You cannot block people that are expressing a viewpoint on your page, you can't hide their comments. And you can't take those comments down, um, unless you put in place general guidelines. Uh, that allow you to do so, that don't run afoul of the First Amendment. So that's a very narrow subset of topics that aren't protected by the First Amendment. Um, and you know, a really good examples of that are incitement of immediate violence. That rarely happens on social media, right? You know, even if you're saying violent things or you're, you know, somebody's threatening someone. It might not be imminent violence that, that's determined there, so nicely protected speech. Even some, you know, all hate speeches protected, for example, um, so. It's very tricky, um.
Right, there, there are any, if they're really a hate speech.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, um, there are, you know, there are, there are limits, um, one, one was the imminent. Uh, violence, threats of imminent violence, um, but that's difficult to prove, right? You know, there was, there was an instance of that in federal government on January sixth, and it was, it was where, uh. In that instance, there was an argument in court that the president had then had. Had, uh, basically incited a riot, right? And that would be unprotected speech, but it was found to be protected. So, you know, it's a very fine line, um, and, you know, it really have to have good facts. It's the deciding, a riot, um, threatening imminent violence before it's unprotected. Absentee is another one, but don't even think about just pornographic material, for example, it has to be. So extreme that it shocks. So extreme that it shocks the conscience. So it's it's things beyond pornographic materials that are unprotected. So just be careful of that when you open your social media pages. You know, you can, if you start from the outset and it's not reactive at all, maybe you just don't allow people comment, right? But if you do want people, you do, that's part of the reason you have your social media pages as a trustee. Then you're just gonna have to have thick skin and you're gonna have to deal with those negative comments. And hope that uh the positive things that you've done prevail in those instances. So that's a tricky piece.
So if there's. If there's a say a community page and then. Part of the staff says something that's, you know, negative or whatever and it's and it's all. Basically on on the clock or while they're at work and then they get other support from other whatever. Employees. And then you. Come to the the administrator to handle that. And they they just say, well, that's freedom of speech. Which it is freedom of speech, but I guess we need to, as a board, we need some directives as to. Get to the administrator when you're when you're on company time, you are a representative of the town. And you know, we wanna keep the town. Healthy in the in in the views of. Our constituents, our people.
Yeah, you you need to be perceived as being on the same team and that is a very important thing. Um so if you do have that type of division happening, it is something that you want to address. And I think uh the the best way to to try and do that is to sort of firm up the expectations and at the board level. That can be through adopting amendments to your personnel policies. You know, what does that violate your personnel policies? Maybe it doesn't, right? And if it doesn't, then you wanna make sure that if you want that conduct to stop, you wanna make sure it's on the books. Um so it's clear to everyone that they can be disciplined for that.
So you have to go into an executive, an executive session to come up with all this stuff.
I don't think so. Not about policy. When we have two staff members who publicly trash an ex-employee while they're on the clock. On Facebook, we probably shouldn't gone into executive session. Yes, this was a year ago, so.
Can't go in the executive session, just have to give that person the option um to have that discussion in an open session. So you can go in and discuss an employee executive set. You wanna be careful about not treading into personal matters that you don't have authority over. But if it's just the administrator kind of giving you an update and you. You basically trying to formulate your your ideas as to what action should you take? You know, if if there is any formal act that's gonna come out, that you wanna make sure you kind of have the executive set first and you give that direction to the administrator house.
So if we don't have that as an ordinance, now we we can have the administrator say, give the directive. Or or give the directive to the attorney to come up with an ordinance.
Yeah, and be a personnel and be in personnel policy.
Right, in personnel policy so that we could pass a resolution so that the administrator could enforce that.
Absolutely. And I would uh I would encourage you to to loop in um swillson, right, your attorney? Yeah, because uh one thing is there is a lawful off-duty statute that basically, you know, protects employees of what they do off-duty.
Right.
Um so you wanna make sure that, you know, off-duty and on-duty, it's it's a bit of a, you know, it's it's kind of a morbidist. It's not, it's not a square cut, so you would think. So when you're when you're talking about things, um when you're trying to make that delineation is. The term involved, but you're exactly right. You work with those folks to to get that kind of thing in place.
And most of the time when those type of comments or whatever are made, you know, they're 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 timestamped. So like I said, there there's nothing that's private on social media.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a social media account except for I look at Marketplace.
Right, right. Yeah, so we did just talk about executive sessions, but um let me give you just a couple more and and a lot of you probably already know these. So there's next one, one real exception. There are a couple of exceptions to the open meetings law or or if that three or more. Trustees uh discussing public business has to happen in the meeting open to the public. Executive sessions is one of them. The other is chance gathering. Now, that's the one I can say off the top of my head and that's where you all bump into each other somewhere. Um as long as you don't discuss public business, that's okay. You don't have to notice that meeting ahead of time. But executive sessions are where you can actually notice a meeting, um whether it's a regular meeting or a special meeting. And you wanna go, you wanna exclude the public from the conversation. Typically, you can't, but under the law, there are a narrower set of authorized topics that you can discuss in private. One of those personal matters, um unless the subject of the conversation has requested that it be held in an open session. Another is negotiation strategy. So maybe you have already decided that you're going to go with a particular contractor. That's an important piece because you can't decide whether or not you're gonna negotiate with someone in executive session. You have to have already determined that you're gonna negotiate with them. Then you go in and you can discuss your strategy and this is the one exception where you're actually allowed to direct your negotiator. Within executive session to go out and, you know, have that uh negotiation directly with the contractor. Um otherwise, you can't make any formal decisions, um take any straw votes even in executive session. You know, straw votes being like, are you guys raise your hand if you're in favor of this? And even though it's informal, that can't happen. Um you don't wanna be lining up your votes essentially in executive session.
Can you line up how your motion is gonna be or what you're gonna motion?
Yeah, I've I've been in executive sessions before to have done that. It hasn't been problematic. But you know, ultimately, you wanna make sure that the vote actually takes place in the uh in the open session. So if you're you're lining up the motion, um you know, maybe you do have a good sense of where it's gonna go. So it starts to get a little sketchy, but um you know, if as long as there is actually not just a rubber stamp vote when you come out. But there's some discussion then um before that happens.
But i- if it's if it's an about, if it's about staff or an employee, that employee needs to be notified and maybe. They need the opportunity to say, I want this to be discussed in front.
That's right.
The open public or I'd be happy to speak in executive session to the board.
Yeah.
What if it's ex-employees and aren't employed anymore?
Uh they do not have that uh that coverage or that right. And in fact, when you're talking about ex-employees, uh that's arguably not a personal matter. So if you're going that, um you know, or prospective employees even, you know, I've been. I've been, I've worked with boards before who had thought that they could interview folks in executive session. We advise against um just because it's not clear in a law whether or not that's allowed in the open meetings law favors transparency.
We can interview in a public.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you know, there there are instances where, you know, there's. You might want to, based on the position, you might wanna have like, you know, two trustees do the initial interview and. Name people finalists before you actually have open interviews, just because um you know, maybe you're gonna get more honest answers in private. We don't wanna run foul of the meetings law, so maybe you start with two and maybe you go on to the next two.
We just conducted all our interviews in an executive sessions.
Okay, well, um that is, that's weird though and just just so you're aware, um I it's not a clear-cut violation. It's just something we advise against just to be safe.
Yeah.
Okay, uh and then just a couple other uh executive session topics. One is real estate that you're discussing, discussing the acquisition or disposition of real estate. That the town owns or wants to acquire. Uh you can discuss that in an executive session. When there's a competitive advantage that you uh lose. Or if you discuss it in public. So you know, if everybody knows a property is for sale. But you have a specific offer in mind, you can discuss that in executive session. But since everybody knows the properties uh for sale, you wanna identify that specific property in your motion. Cause that has a compromised purpose of the executive session. So that's another thing, strict procedures. Mode them has to be um has to cite the statutory authority to go in the executive session. And it has to state the the purpose with as much detail as you possibly can without compromising the purpose of. Holding that discussion. So if a property is already known, it's not gonna. Give up uh your competitive advantage by naming the property, then that's okay. If it's not off the market property and. You think that if you uh disclose the property to the property owner and it's, you know, uh that would. Ruin your competitive advantage to get in there first, um then you might not have to.
Water rights.
Water rights are another instance that problems also, you're exactly right. You can discuss that in many boards too. Any others that you guys have questions about?
Shouldn't have executive sessions off work sessions.
Correct, that has to be in a regular session. Okay, uh next slide, please. Okay, so fourth out of the principle here is that we want you to be comfortable there with the ethical rules governing your topic. And the theme that runs through the codes of ethics is that it's not permissible to use public office for private financial gain. Um and key areas are conflicts of interest and that's the one that you'll hear about most. As you become more seasoned on board and it's probably one you've heard about most as veterans and uh really. This is where you have a financial interest in something and it's different than the rest of the board's interests in something. Maybe you're talking about something that affects only two properties in town and yours is one of them. The decision that you're making will have an impact on uh your your finances. It will either, one way it will be to your detriment, one way it will be to your advantage. In that case, you have a conflict of interest. You need to disclose that on the record. Um and when you disclose it on the record, sometimes you might have a brief discussion about, you know, why you think you have a conflict of interest. Maybe it's with the attorney, um maybe it's with the member of staff, maybe it's with the mayor. You know, build that record out of this disclosure, um give as much detail as possible. Because that could be important. Um your record could be important later in a decision, particularly it's quasi-digital one. The liquor licenses, the land use applications, uh because those can go to the court for review. If you do, if it is determined that you have a conflict of interest and only you can decide that, right? Everyone on board might know that you have a conflict of interest. But it's you that decides whether you have it and whether you recuse yourself. So recuse just means that you're not gonna participate in the discussion or vote in that particular matter. So you've got one of those, one of the two properties that's affected by the decision is yours. You dispose that, you recuse yourself. That means you don't vote. And the last principle is you cannot detect an influence of the person first. And our suggestion is to leave the room, um if you do have that conflict of interest and you recuse yourself. Because even just sitting here, looking down, um you know. Everybody knows which way you wanna vote on the issue if you have that conflict, right? And you can even like even some looks or, you know, like a scoff or, you know, something along those lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Their dirty look at somebody, something like that, that is influencing others. And you know, now that you've got the owl and Zoom, um that's gonna become part of the record, so it's important um that you leave the room. I mean, I don't think I could sit here and not react to something that I was passionate about, right? So. Uh that's an important piece and it might be easier on you to do that anyway. So uh confidential information, you know, you you cannot disclose or use any confidential information to the town. For your own personal benefit. You know, maybe you have a uh you have an understanding of. The town's finances and you you wanna start a business based on those finances, based on that data that you have. You can't do that. Really can't. It's a, that's disclosing or using confidential information for your personal benefit. The the only way that you would be able to use that data, let's say in that. That very high-level example would be if confidentiality were waived. And guess who gets to waive that? It's you guys. So you know, if you have confidential information, it's not confidential by law, but you you've made it confidential. You can lift that confidentiality and you can cause it to be used. We see that in not examples of personal gain, but we see that in examples of where, you know, maybe you have an counselor. A third-party accountant that you have to disclose information or financial information to. You want that information to remain confidential and it is by law, but. You put a contract clause in there that says you can use it for the specific purposes that we've retained. You to use it for under this contract, but nothing else, right? So that's an instance where you, as a board, assuming that contract gets a majority consensus. Decided to waive uh the confidentiality that information adds to that particular person. Uh gifts, um our general advice on gifts is a little more nuanced than this, but decline any gifts that seem to be connected with your service. No matter how small that gift is, right? You know, use appearances of impropriety can be just as bad as actual violations of the ethical rules. Um because, you know, people are gonna see you out there, you know, if it's as simple as being in line behind somebody who's ordering. Coffee um and they're a developer or uh somebody seeking a liquor license and they turn around and say, oh, I'm trustee. Let me, let me get whatever you have in your hands, right? If somebody sees that happen and they come into the hearing and they put that on the record, you know, for the public. Then, you know, that could be a violation of your ethical rules and it could show your your bias and. Could show that you were improperly influenced in coming to the decision you came to. Which could cause you to violate that rules and could have impacts on the decision as well. Negative. The gift rules, uh important thing. So any gifts that are connected with your services, you wanna decline. That doesn't mean that you, it's connected with your service, right? So that doesn't mean you can't accept Christmas gifts from your family members or even, you know, somebody that you're friends with. As long as it's not connected with your service. There is a safe harbor in the state ethics codes code. Basically said that you're, you're okay um if you've accepted gifts uh from anyone really. Up to seventy-five dollars to anyone count your year. And that is a safe harbor though. Um it's 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 intended to be that. That protection that, you know, if you're out to dinner with uh constituents and they buy, let's say, it's just. A resident of the town you're friends with, you're the only elected official at that dinner. And they say, we're gonna buy everyone their meal. You should not accept that, um you know. But if it's, you know, if you do, then it's okay as long as it was unextended by. So you're not gonna get in trouble providing the rules. But if it is connected to your service. Um in some way or another, you know, maybe it's, your friend is also somebody with an application pending for the board. In that instance, you would violate the rules and um your decision as a board could be. Potentially uh negatively affected by that, so.
Well, uh as an example, I got a call from. A four-four mayor that. You know, and he asked me as mayor and said, mayor, I'd like to meet with you at lunch and and take you out to lunch, can we speak? I'd like to, you know, go over a few things with you, uh concerns or whatever. And I just said, you know what, if it has to do with the town, I'm sorry, but I can't meet with you on a personal basis that has to do with. You know. I don't need anybody behind me to answer. I don't need anybody.
Yeah.
You know, and it was taken. As an insult.
Yeah.
Of course, I, you know, that's, and that that wasn't my intent, but I I don't want any.
Right.
Anybody saying that, hey.
Yeah.
You're meeting with somebody or you're meeting with a previous board member or whatever and then.
If the former mayor wants, wants to tell you how to be mayor, he could come and spend three minutes at a public meeting.
Well, in, in two, in that instance, you know, if you. You did wanna avoid it, what you know, like being sloppy or something. You could say, I'm, I'm willing to meet with you, but I have to buy my own, uh, my own meal.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the offer, but I, I just don't feel that it's cordial to.
Yeah.
Discuss that, especially when. I had been. Verbally yell that in, in the past for that individual.
Well, that's, that's another thing too, you're, you're thinking about appearances as you should, you know, cause. Even if you're not violating the ethical rules, because. Uh, let's say you went through with it and the meal was twenty five dollars, thirty five dollars, something like that. You haven't violated the ethical rules technically, um, unless you were, uh, asked to do something or. It was implied that this was, uh, connected with your service in some way. Um, you know, maybe if it's former mayor just kinda telling you how to do your job and they're not really requesting you to do anything, maybe that's not. But it's a fine line, I think that's the important point, and even those appearances matter, you know, if somebody sees you doing that, then that could cause.
Have the rare situation in our municipality where for years we had staff. Employees on the board, so he didn't want to appear that he was micromanaging an employee either. By privately meeting with an employee, even though he was the previous mayor, he was also.
Interesting.
Still a employee.
Yeah, yeah, that, that gets, uh, conflicting very quickly and they, you know, I, that's, that's not done anymore, but I can certainly understand.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's tricky, it's, it's actually prohibited now.
The, uh, as far as the conflicts of interest, I went back and read every set of minutes, those two employees. Put our administrator in her position, put her, voted to put our clerk in her position, voted on their own raises. Through the expenditures with their own page, I mean, we talked about.
Yeah. Yeah, that is a, that's a.
Voted on changes to the employee handbook, voted to insurance changes, voted, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's another, I mean, obviously they, they had an economic interest, a financial interest in doing that. And yeah, that's another thing, if. If you as a board member, uh, if the board is discussing your conduct, it's going to. Uh, you know, singling you out on something, whether it's right or wrong, you're not able to vote on that specific issue if that has to do with that you personally. So that's, that's another very good point. Uh, and then. We talked about this, the appearances, um, the mayor gave a great example of that, um, where, you know, he declined to do something that he might not have even violated. Rules, but it was because he knew it could be viewed in a way that might not be good for the town. That's, that's ultimately, you might be doing, so you're upholding your fiduciary duty and putting the interest of the town above those of your own. Even if the mayor didn't really wanna do that. Uh, what if there was a goal gonna be there? I, that, that would be, I was actually asked that in an interview once and I don't even remember how it is. About a gold bar. It's like. This is a weird place. I didn't, I didn't end up working for them and they, uh, they actually got, it was a lot harder than I got charged with the mortgage fraud. It's a year later, so. Uh, just, yeah. That's right, that's true. They also asked. Uh, next slide.
Like this?
Yeah, yeah. I think they were trying to get at my personal ethics. Just gonna be willing to play ball. Yeah, very, very glad. Didn't do that. So you do have some local, uh, rules, so when you have local ethics rules, we follow those. Um, and you don't follow the state standards of conduct or even the state statutes. Um, because it's presumed that your. Your, uh, local rules are in compliance and more restrictive, equal or more restrictive than the state rules. They were be less restricted, they wouldn't, they'd be preempted by the state law. Uh, but the good news is they're exactly the same, so they mimic the Colorado standards of conduct, they're just reiterated in your code. Which might give rise to the local ethics process, um, which would be concurrent with the state's process, you know, the state has. An independent ethics commission, which evaluates civil conduct of, uh, state officials and also local officials, officials. And anyone, member of the public, um. Uh, one of you, a staff member could file an ethics complaint against the trustee. With the independent ethics commission and it's out of your hands at that point, they do it that way. If they file it locally, then you follow your local procedures, but it really just depends on how the complaint is filed, which procedure it goes through. Um, and then you do have this, you know, ethical relationship with vendors and suppliers, which. Might actually, uh, derivate a little bit from the state law, it's a little bit different. You have the concern, concerning gifts, favoritism and anti-competitive behaviors. And I encourage you to take a look at those provisions, um, just to familiarize yourself with them and make sure you're not. But rules, I don't remember what they say off the top of my head. We'll go to the next slide, please. So, you know, ethical rules only get you so far and they're kind of baseline of how you should be acting. And, uh. You know, if you're, you're strictly following the ethical rules, that doesn't mean you're gonna get your job done, right? Um, you also wanna commit to high levels first. Recognizing that inappropriate conduct, uh, can be destructive to the public body and its reputation. And its agenda, uh, I mean, getting public business done is what you're here to do and, you know, if you're, if you have. You know, lack, lack of respect for one another, for example. Uh, that's not, that doesn't go towards efficiency in government. Uh, it's, it's much better to be respectful and, uh, to. To disagree, um, respectfully with, with other members of the board and with members of the public. Um, that way you, with members of staff sometimes, that way you're still going toward the goal of getting things done. Uh, for the betterment of the town. Um, outside of some room is, these are, these are problem areas that we've listed here. Outside of syndrome is when an elected official were going at it alone, that could be something as bad as going out there and, um. Acting alone, you know, entering the contract according to binding the tax. When you don't have authority to do that, um, and those instances, you can be personally liable for the contract, so you don't wanna do that. But it can be something as simple too, as just hanging on to your own personal agenda, even though the board has decided in another way. Um, and there's a lack of support for what you want on a particular issue. And you continue to go out alone and you're undermining the board's decision, uh, then. You know, that, that really doesn't move the town forward and it, it puts you in a sort of a gridlock. And you see that at all levels of government where, you know, a lot of the officials are unwilling to let go of their own personal agendas when. The, the consensus making body has already decided another. Um, yeah, I see this somewhat of a relief if something is decided, I, I put my whole life on the line. Uh, for, for an ordinance, right? And. The, the board still says, no, we don't wanna pass this ordinance and, you know. I can point to that when faced by a citizen that says. I, you didn't get it done? And I'm just like, well, I, I did everything. And, you know, some, in some ways that's a shield, right? You know, you, you can't do anything alone, so. Uh, you can tell members of the public that. Accusations of lack of respect, lack of good faith, hidden agendas. Preconceptions and undue partisanship, instability, those kinds of things create some distrust. You know, if somebody comes in here as a member of the public and they see you make a decision. That they didn't even know was coming or that this on the agenda, but they didn't hear you discuss the ins and outs of it at all. You know, that's, that's really something where they're gonna say, well, there was something wrong here, um. This was obviously disgusting for it, um, open meetings a lot, potentially. Um, they're gonna say there was a hidden agenda, um. You know, all those types of things undermine, uh, trust in government and. That can be the single most crippling thing for a government body. Because if you, if you don't have that trust of members of the public, what are they gonna do? They're gonna inundate your clerical records request. They're gonna come in here and they're gonna take all their three minutes and maybe even go over and they're gonna be saying, you know, mean things to you. And, you know, that's, that's an instance where, uh, you know, maybe your meetings start going past and again, maybe they start approaching midnight, which happens. Um, and very often in municipalities, um, and. Those are the types of things that you wanna avoid, cause ultimately they're gonna distract from their ultimate goals. Um, an imbalance of information and participation on the body, your bodies constantly lining up the same split vote on every issue. That's another indication that you're not functioning properly, right? Cause if you're lining up the same people on every single vote, it, it just simply means that you know you have the majority in those instances and. And you're gonna go with that way so that you can prevail, but. We're all individuals, we all have our own views, right? So. The, you know. If it just so happens that you're lining up on every single vote, then that is what it is. But if it's constant and, you know, you're not hearing much, the public's not hearing much discussion, other trustees aren't hearing much discussion, uh, certain. Thing and the votes are still going the exact same way every time, uh, that can under, undermine confidence in government as well. Um, and then that imbalance of information, if you get in here and you. You know that the, uh, a certain trustee has a ton of information on something and you feel like you don't have. That information, that, you know, your natural question is why haven't I been provided that information or how do they get that information? And in certain instances, it's a bad thing that they haven't been provided, right? In that liquor license setting where you have to have a public hearing. Um, you can only decide the application on facts that were developed at the year. So if you're out there doing your own independent research. Then you have actually violated, uh, those quasi judicial principles and you might have violated the aptitude process. So, uh, that's why there should never be an imbalance of information, you all have the same information. And, you know, you can always ask for, you don't have enough information in the patent or in, uh, staff reports, through reports. Then you can always ask for continuance on a, a matter and you can request that specific information as part of your note. Uh, to get it into the pack.
So sometimes we have a. Four hundred page contract and we're trying to read through it and it's all gibberish.
Yeah.
And I did ask, um, recently, when we have to approve a contract like this, can we have a work session an hour ahead and our administrator said. It's our attorney's job to read the contract, it's your job to approve it, but how do we approve something we're not comprehending?
Right.
So.
Yeah, yeah, it's very important.
Yeah.
You should, you should be.
So could that go in the agenda policy that if we have contracts to approve, that we would like to request a work session an hour ahead of time or just the?
Yeah, you could, you could put that in the agenda policy, absolutely, and you know, that it could be a work session, it could be. As simple as, uh, you know, a summary of the business points of the contract, you know, I, you. From an attorney's perspective, right? It's the attorney's job to make sure that the liability provisions are protected of the town.
Yeah.
And the indemnity provisions and things like that, and you wanna be able to trust your attorney to ever review those and make sure they're protecting the town. Um, but when it comes to the business points, you guys should have a very clear understanding of that before you make. A decision, business points are just, you know. Town receiving services in most instances, right? Um, whether it's, let's say it's an IT. You guys wanna start using Microsoft Teams or something like that. Um, or you wanna get a Microsoft Office license, something like that. Um, in those instances, you wanna understand, here's the services that we're getting, here's what we're paying for it. And what are, what are some of the finer details that implicate our, our usage? Of this, um, what are the limits of how we might use this piece of talk where, um, and. How, how are the town's interests affected? You know, how are they gonna use the information that we input into that system? Uh, so in, how are they complying with laws and things like that that affect the government? And, you know, we should be able to ask your, your attorneys, um, or your staff about those kinds of questions. Um, and I, I always say, uh, I was municipal attorney before I started working at Service, and. A lot of times my clients would just send me over a contract and say, review this. And I'd be like, okay, but I'm gonna need to know what you negotiated and what you wanna see in this stuff, what are you bargaining? What are you actually hoping to get out of this and how does it meet those goals? And then you start to get to the bottom of it and you realize that they have a very good understanding of it. Um, but they just assume that as an attorney, we're gonna be able to. Think up that stuff and determine on your own, I don't know what you're bargaining for, I don't know what's gonna suit the town's. Cities' needs in, in those instances, so I need to have an understanding of that in order to even approve that contract, so. Let alone make edits, so. Yeah, so I, I think that is an important point, seek to understand your comments. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, um, so last. This is the last theme, um. This is committed to providing due process, I said that, that's on. Most of the time you're acting as legislators, that's your, your typical, uh, function as a board, that's your policies. Making, where you're adopting ordinances, you're setting the town's budget. Uh, things like that, your, your general policy rules, it might be an admission statement. Um, but then, those are, those are the general policies that apply generally, they apply to all similarly situated people. Um, that you have jurisdiction, the residents of the town. Um. These just opposing, uh, legislation, your legislative function is the quasi judicial. So you're not in the quasi judicial function, you are not looking at making general policies that apply everywhere. Um, in the same way, you are looking to make decisions affecting a specific applicant's property rights, that's why I kept using liquor licenses. Somebody comes in here and they want a liquor license. And they stand up here, uh, to give their presentation. Um, staff comes up here, gives a presentation and then members of the public speak. At the end of the day, you're gonna be making a decision on the applicant, um, the application. Based on what you heard from all those people and any documents that people submit during that hearing. Um, and that is a property right, uh, a liquor license is considered a property right because it gives you the right to, to sell alcohol. Property as part of your business. Um, staying with zoning, variances, a good example of that, you know, property rights, so that's why you owe them due process. Comes from the constitution, very familiar source, fourteenth amendment. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process law, property is the one that matters here. Uh, when it comes to criminal issues, liberty is the important one there. Uh, so, that's the. That's where it comes from and. Quasi judicial principles are designed specifically to allow you to afford. The advocate due process, so that's why we want you to comply with them. So. Essentially, you're acting as judges in this instance, and that's an unfamiliar role for a lot of folks, particularly when it comes to being on board. That's asked to be a judge because you're one of five and the judge is really you as a body. Um, so that makes it even a little bit more tricky, um. And you have personal responsibilities and group responsibilities, so that's what makes it a little bit harder. All right, so let's, uh. Let's unpack this a little bit because failure to provide this due process can expose you and the town to liability. Um, as we already talked about, there's that federal form of immunity that affects you only as far as. There has not been a clearly established right, uh, under the constitution or statute, so. Let's, uh, go to the next slide, please. Okay, so. Good and bad news, um, I think it's good, I actually think it's good. You in your, in your code have actually adopted the town. The board is an institution that has adopted its own rules procedure for holding quasi judicial hearings. The reason this is good is because. They're clearly established, right? Um, you know exactly what you have to do when you read those code provisions. Uh, bad news is that you have to comply with them, since they're on the books and, and that's. That is not bad news, it really isn't, um, but it just means that since they're on the books, you have to follow them strictly. Uh, you cannot. Afford somebody due process, uh, by another method, you have to follow these rules strictly. Um, and they're designed to ensure that due process, so what do they require? Off the top of my head, I, um, I don't, I can't speak specifically to them. Um, because they are pretty detailed, but what they require is basically giving notice to all interested parties. But what they require is basically giving notice to all interested parties. If it's a land use hearing, you know, there are mailings that go out, the property is posted, same with a liquor hearing. You're gonna have the property being posted, so people who walk by know that there's uh, something, um, there's a hearing that's coming up uh, affecting that specific property. You gotta provide that notice. Uh, the next one is an opportunity to be heard. So you have to have this hearing, um, you have to have a hearing on quasi judicial matters, um, in most instances. Um, there are some other ways where a clerk might be able to administratively approve some liquor license applications, like renewals, things like that. Um, but in most cases you have to have a hearing. And you have to give a meaningful opportunity to be heard. So if the applicant comes up here, gives their presentation, um, but, you know, half, half the time the board is talking and they don't get to say everything that they wanted to say, maybe they haven't gotten their meaningful opportunity. Um, so you want to be careful of that, make sure the applicant is able to do that. And then you have to have the impartial decision maker. And that's you, that's you. And so a lot of the quasi judicial principles are actually designed to keep you impartial. Um, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so keeping you in part, let me get your involvement, just your participation in the public hearing. So you get an application for variance, you get an application for a liquor license. At that point, that's when your quasi judicial responsibilities begin. So, um, once you get that application, the town's gonna get it, staff's gonna get it, they're not gonna share with the board. Because the first time you should be reviewing it is in the packet, right prior to the public. And this is irrespective of any of the level of citizen interest or staff activity. Um, staff might be working on this application for a long time, right? Could be, you know, maybe it's a big development like a gas station coming in or it's uh, um, maybe it's a, a variance, um, that's hotly contested among the public. You gotta avoid all those conversations with everyone. Um, you've gotta avoid even thinking uh, about it as best as you can. Um, in, in learning detail, shield yourself in the details about it, don't read news articles about it, nothing. Wait until it's ripe for the governing body, that's when it gets in your packet and that's when it's out of the here. Um, when it's in your packet, you can review it, but don't discuss it with anyone else until you're here. You may neutral, you know, maybe you, maybe you know it's a gas station, right? Because you, you try to shield yourself, but word gets around, that's okay. Um, as long as you're not out there actively engaging and trying to get additional details about. But you know at the base level, it's a gas station coming in. You don't want a gas station for whatever reason, maybe you do want it, maybe you don't. Um, if you are just deciding it based on whether you want it or not, you are not remaining neutral. Uh, because in the hearing, you're gonna have to hear everybody's thoughts. And you're gonna have to hear, you're gonna have to accept all the evidence and then you're gonna have to make a decision, not based on whether you want a gas station or not. But based on the specific criteria in the code.
So when you say everybody's comments in, in a hearing, then it's, it's okay for i- if you have a gallery of constituents and they have concerns, then they should have the right to speak or bring up those concerns.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yeah, it's a public hearing, um, members of the public get a chance to speak. You can limit them, and I see you have a clock here, you can limit them to three minutes, if that's what you guys typically do. Um, you want to apply that even handedly, you know, if you cut somebody off after three minutes, you gotta cut the next person off. Um, you gotta decide whether you're gonna allow people to compile their time. Um, we typically advise against it because it can get, you know, I'm gonna donate my three minutes to type this out and it goes on.
Oh, you see that with Congress and Senate all the time.
Yeah, and it, it goes, it gets difficult to keep track of and, you know, it maybe increases the risk of redundancy and lengthens the hearing. Um, and all those things can have negative impacts. Um, but yeah, you do want to hear from members of the public and they should have their meaningful opportunity to be heard as interested partners as well. And uh, you're perfectly okay, once you're in that hearing setting, uh, to listen to what they say. And you're perfectly okay to accept the documents and the evidence that they have, um, at that point, but just not. And the reason is because the other side, you know, maybe the public is adamantly against this gas station. And maybe the applicant, obviously the applicant is for thi- this gas station. So if you're talking to members of the public and getting their, their thoughts about, in their, their opinions about why you should deny it outside of the present, the applicant, that's not fair. You know, what if, what if I um, got pulled over for speeding? And I decided that I didn't want to just pay the fine and I want to contest it in court. I go into the courthouse and I see that the prosecutor is talking to the judge. I'm just like, okay, that's a, that's a little weird. And later on, find out that the, the prosecutor was actually talking to the judge about my case. And within minutes of me getting up and giving my side of the story, the judge says, you know what, I don't need to hear anything else, uh, you're gonna pay this fine and you're also gonna pay uh, court costs. And it's actually five times as much as we would pay if you just pay the fine. Um, that's unfair, I'm gonna walk away with it from that feeling like crap. And like that, you know, I live in an impressive state, you know, so.
That, that's, you know, it's funny you bring that up because in my younger days, that's exactly what happened to me.
Oh, really?
I get pulled over by a state trooper. I asked, okay, where's, I had two, two kids that were not mine, I was driving somebody else's car. But because it was a hot rod, I was accused of speeding. And it was around a curve and taking school and electronics and other microwaves, they don't go around mountains.
Oh, yeah.
And in his, but when we went to court, so I contested it, but when we went to court, that was the first thing. The state trooper greeted the judge, you know, on a first name basis and they started having a conversation. And I knew right, right then and there.
Yeah.
I'm wasting my time.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. It feels unfair. We want members of the public, we want the applicant, we want the staff, we want everyone who's participated in the hearing and testified right here before you to feel like they got to say what they wanted to say and that you listened. Um, and then they, after you get done with receiving evidence and you close the public hearing, you're gonna deliberate, right? And you're gonna talk about all the evidence that you received, whether it's testimony, documents, and you're gonna go through the code criteria. And you're gonna say, somebody testified as to this, so there is evidence that it meets this criteria. Um, and then somebody else spoke to the opposite, so there's kind of railing evidence that it doesn't meet this criteria. You're gonna go through and discuss it like that, right? Um, and if, if you do that, I can tell you, um, from personal experience and I'm sure you've experienced this too. People are still gonna be angry, um, and upset if their decision, if the decision goes against what they felt. Um, but if they feel like they were heard and they feel like you followed proper procedures, they're gonna, they're gonna be like, okay, well, you know, I they listened to me, but uh, there was, there was another reason. Um, and they follow their code criteria and they came to the decision, um, in a, in a fair way. And, you know, that I think is, is all you can do, right? You know, because nobody's gonna be happy with that decision. Um, this is an important point, you know, how we said, limit your involvement to just participation at the public hearing. That means don't engage with one side or the other, um, or with your fellow quasi judges, other board members or with members of the public before or outside the hearing. Um, we call these experte contacts, but really it just means any outside of the hearing communications about the application. You don't want to be engaging in those because one, um, it's not ripe yet for the governing body until the hearing. Two, it might go toward you making up your mind before the hearing, which is another bad thing. That, let me tell you, that can get out on the record, um, and that can cause a decision to be overturned. Um, and it's, it's really for the reasons that we talked about before, it's unfair. You know, in a criminal proceeding, uh, you have a Sixth Amendment right to face your accuser, um, and cross-examine. Um, this is a less extreme case because we're not dealing with, you know, uh, the wa- the light wrong in due process clause or the liberty clause, we're dealing with property. Um, and it's a little bit lower stakes, but treated just the same in a lot of ways. But you don't have a Sixth Amendment right to face your, um, you don't have a Sixth Amendment right to cross-examine the applicant, for example, as a member of the public or as the member of the staff. But, um, just to bear out this example, um, the reason we have a, this rule against expert of the context is there's nobody to contest what somebody else is saying outside of the hearing. So, and unchecked information, if taken as true, um, you know, that, that doesn't necessarily vote well for making the right decision, right? Um, somebody might have a perfectly good point in opposition to what they're saying at that point. Um, and maybe you've already made up your mind based on what that individual is sitting outside of here, so that's what we want to do. Um, and let me talk to you real quick about how uh, these kinds of things get onto the record. How do you get discovered for talking to people outside the hearing? Well, somebody might come up here and be like, well, when I was talking to the mayor about this, um, that's on the record now. Um, you know, that, that, that happens all the time, and you should be surprised. Yeah, yeah, or, you know, I, I drove, I drove by the site, I actually got out, walked around. Um, and I don't think they need variance. Uh, you know, that's not your involvement and participation, that's, you're not limiting your involvement at the public hearing. You're actually going out and exploring this property, you were in variance, that's okay. You can, you're gonna drive by, right, it's a small town, that's okay, don't get out in a car and take, pick up rocks and start looking at stuff, you know, because then you're in a position where you're not a fair and neutral decision maker. Because you have your own testimony that you developed by searching around the property. And as soon as you state that during your deliberations, which we're gonna talk about, Max, oh, I uh, I noticed in my own observations of the property, this and that. Um, you have all of a sudden, you're not neutral, you're testifying and you're the judge. And, you know, that, that's not how this works in court. You, you don't have judges testifying, right? They're the decision makers, you have uh, the defendant and the plaintiff testify, um, and their witnesses. So deliberations, um, this, this is, they're all equally important. But this, this is most missed by boards, um, and the, the issue is, you've got all this evidence. And now that you've had the evidence, you have to take that evidence and evaluate it based on the criteria that's in the words. Um, and if you, if you don't do that, if you don't take that evidence and evaluate it based on the criteria, then you're not gonna have a record of how you got to your decision. There's not gonna be any evidence, clear or competent evidence in the record that supports your decision, which is a clear way to get it overturned. So you get into deliberations, first the mayor's gonna close the public hearing and um, no more evidence or testimony will be accepted by the, maybe asking questions of those who testified to build the record down a little bit more before you go sit here. But, you know, that, that's kind of how up to the procedures of the town. Uh, but then when you do close the hearing, you gotta deliberate. And like I said, you want to go through the criteria and apply the evidence, one or the other on each prom, ideally. Um, and what if, what if you're doing that and somebody just says, uh, I'm voting no on this application? And that's really all you have in the evidentiary record. It's not gonna work, right? Doesn't talk about any of the criteria, you don't like it. So then it becomes incumbent on the rest of the board, um, and particularly the residing officer, to get to the bottom of that. And Sam, my boss, the general counsel at Service, calls this his rule of why. Um, it was Tammy's rule of why when she was general counsel, so maybe it'll get passed down to me at some point, but Sam's rule of why. Um, I don't like this application, mayor says, well, why? Well, it doesn't meet the criteria in the code. Okay, well, why doesn't it meet the criteria? So you can see as you ask why over and over again, you eventually get to the bottom of the actual legal reasons that somebody is coming to their decision. And if they just continue to say, well, I don't like it, I hate gas stations in that instance, I don't think of another gas station for record or town or whatever. Um, that's uh, if you have that statement in the record, um, and you don't have other statements in the record that show that you got to the decision, um, based on a criteria, then that can be damaging to your decision and could result in it being overturned by district court, and then you're gonna have to do it all over again. Um, which is problematic, um, for a number of reasons. One is the administrative burden, staff puts a ton of work into these kind of things, getting them prepared for you. Um, and then they're gonna have to do it over again. Um, another thing is a financial thing, um, you know, if somebody goes through all the effort to challenge the decision that you've made and they prevail in district court, then you have to pay their attorney's fees. And sometimes those can be really high in their court costs. Um, and then, uh, it also sort of undermines uh, your, your, your function as judges, right? Because it's been seen that you haven't been able to do that, um, as you're legally charged to do it. Um, and people are gonna be, they're gonna scrutinize your decisions. Lots of negative consequences. So I encourage you to take a look at this video, I don't know if any of you did from last time, it's the same one. But, um, it is, it's just more about these principles and it's Tammy and Sam talking about quasi judicial rules of engagement. So I'll go to the next slide, please. Okay, so I, I've realized I've taken you way over two hours, so I apologize that, for that. Um, but your great concluding thoughts, talk about this a little bit, um, but there are many aspects of risk management that municipalities or elected officials can't. Public perception can't control that. The actions of claimants, the inclinations of judges, right? You know, if you are sued, you can, you can put up your best fight, your best arguments, and you might still lose. That, uh, that's the first thing we learn as lawyers, it's like, you can, you can do your ass to the best, you can even be right, but you might lose. And that's important, but it's true. Um, the enactment of federal and state legislatures, you know, maybe, maybe the state uh, preempts the field or preempts you in legislating in a certain area by adopting state regulations that your local ordinance is conflicting, state prevails in that case, um, nothing you can really do about. Um, so increasing wide leadership in the areas you can control will support your success and reduce your risks. Um, and in a way, it's a blessing that you don't have full control over everything because then you would be looked at by the citizens for doing, um, doing everything right in those areas too. Um, so it, it really, the framework, legal framework, federal, state, local really protects you in that way and focuses and narrows your attention on specific issues. Uh, committing to a no surprises approach is, is probably my favorite principle and I think it works the best, it's really internalized. Um, no one should come in here not knowing what you're gonna discuss. Nobody should come in here with imbalanced information. And no one should come in here being surprised by something that you voted. They might be surprised about the direction you go, um, but they shouldn't actually be surprised because you're gonna have a bold and robust and meaningful discussion of that in the meeting. Can't happen before an interview, you violate the meetings law, right? So make sure you reserve the nuts and bolts for your discussion, even if you've had one-on-one discussions among yourself, which are permissible on legislative issues. Um, as long as you don't have three or more in those discussions. Um, even if you've had those one-on-one discussions and you kind of know where everyone's sitting, make sure that you still have that robust of discuss, robust discussion in front of the public. That's where the public is going to know, I voted on a specific issue, why we got there, and that's your real chance to shine, right? Um, and uh, that no surprises approach really goes very far and it helps with people thinking that you're transparent and helps build that public trust. Dealing effectively, effectively with discord, discord is meaning, you know, ineffectiveness. Um, things that sort of derail the board from getting its public business done in one way or the other. Um, you know, it might be as simple as the mayor sort of stepping in and saying, I agree with you, it's your time limit. Um, please sit down so that somebody else can, uh, can speak and we want to hear from everyone tonight. Things like that, finding tactful ways to deal with, um, you know, uh, members of the public, other board members who, you know, there, there's always somebody on the board who talks more than others, right? You know, finding ways to uh, ensure that board members who don't speak as much, maybe aren't as naturally inclined to speak uh, have their voice and that it's equal to others, or at least they're encouraged to be given the time to. Uh, have their voice and that it's equal to others, or at least they're encouraged of giving the time to speak on every issue. Uh, committing stability and mutuality of respect, you know, things just work a whole lot better when you're not attacking somebody. You know, I, I worked for a board for a while who would speak directly to one another. Um, instead of, you know, sort of drafting, I disagree with uh, trustee's values, uh, remarks. Um, for this and that reason, and here's why I feel the way I do. Sometimes that's more effective than saying, no, I don't, I don't agree with you at all, trustee, that whole, and speaking directly. I mean, that can, that can just feel immediately like you're attacked and can make you defensive. So if you start to feel like people are getting defensive, maybe you switch to something along those lines where you're not directly addressing somebody. But you're saying, I agree with or I disagree with their remarks, and here's why. Um, just one example of committing to that stability and mutual respect. Um, some boards go as far as to say, everybody gets to speak once before anyone can speak again. Um, if somebody truly is hogging a lot of discussion, sometimes that's the way to go. Um, touting your governing bodies' successes, um, and your organizations and your staff's successes. You know, municipalities are, uh, historically and typically very bad at, uh, touting their successes, right? Um, you know, you don't need a PR person to tattle your successes, you know, if, if you fix the town's water system. Or something as momentous as that, or, um, even if it's a, it's a smaller thing. Like you, uh, you've finished a, a project, a ball field or something, you know, anything like that. Tout that success and just say, and, and give credit to those who deserved it, right? Who were involved, um, that makes everybody feel good, it makes your organization, um, function better. I can tell you why I've worked for some, some bad bosses before. And I, um, I did not do well in those situations where I felt micro revenge, or where I felt. Um, that I was receiving criticism, but when I did something that may or may not warrant it. But when I did something great, I wasn't receiving any sort of praise for that. Uh, so make sure that, you know, there are going to be opportunities where you need to be critical. But make sure that you're balancing it out when there are, uh, successes that occur. Um, and then committing to services to the town as an entity and the governing body as an institution. Um, you know, respect the institution, respect the fact that you only have one vote, and respect the game, right? It is a game at the end of the day, you've gotta get, uh, at least two other trustees to agree with you on something. And if you do that, you're effective, and that's awesome. Um, and uh, respect that and don't try to undermine that, do it the right way. Um, that, that governs respect and trust for it. Um, and then embracing your fiduciary duty, your stewardship of the behalf of your responsibilities or membership. Um, that's, that's all I have, there are a couple more slides, um, with some additional resources and some things about. So, um, that elected official handbook is, is really great, there's digital copy in there. We are gonna consider updating that either this year or next year. Um, the only thing that off the top of my head I know that has changed a little bit is, um, issues of. Uh, board conduct and reprimanding board members, which is, you know, a board action. Um, censure is one of them, there is a case recently that discussed censure and set some parameters on what that actually means. Um, that will be included in our updates, but everything else is more or less right and, um, and up to date. And then, um, the elected appointed resources, you, you will have access to that. And if there's anything that is behind or available, you don't have it, it login, um, you can ask members of staff to get access to it. Um, YouTube channel, I think we're gonna be doing more of that soon, um. But uh, all of those are great resources. Then lastly, uh, just a little bit about SIRSA, um, we are at actually two hundred ninety-three. Um, we're never owned, never governed, no profit motive, our sole motive is to serve our members effectively and responsibly. Um, you know, we're more than just an insurance company, we do provide you with, with coverage, um, against liability. Um, and we, that is certainly a main function of ours. But we also do these trainings and we, uh, have way more than just these legal trainings, right? We have lots of risk management ones for employees and those out in the field as well. Um, so we're trying to, you know, for our own self-interest, we're trying to keep our, uh, members from submitting claims, right? Cause that's, that's where the, that claim is no claim for an insurance perspective. Um, but luckily that goes hand in hand with your goals too, right? You wanna stay out of trouble, and that's what we're here to help you do. Um, so you know, take a look at all that stuff, have you guys, uh, heard about our hail program? Uh, do you get a lot of hail here?
No.
No, okay, um, we do have a predictive hail system that's kind of interesting, um, and it tells about. It actually predicts hailstorms ninety minutes ahead of time. Um, so it's interesting, we might get there with other types of, uh, natural type disasters as well. We'll keep you informed on any innovation that we do, not just being warnings.
Well, speaking of that, I know whether, um, I just recently found out that we have cloud seeders up here on the mesa.
Oh, really?
Put in by the county and I also found, talked to.
You didn't know? Cloud seeders, oh, you're so, you're just quiet. There's one in Carlisle's house, been there like twenty years.
That's interesting.
But North Dakota has brought them out because of what, whatever to put out, you know. You have somebody that's, uh, I know, with somebody that's studying soil and it ends up, you know, changing the. The environment and the terrain and the wildlife, and so.
Yeah.
North Dakota's kicked them out, but.
Uh, yeah, I guess.
North Dakota's got your rain.
Yeah, and I've been here, you know, and I, I wonder how that, um, could work to the water law. I'm not water law attorney myself, but that's not how many specialists feel. Yeah, um, well, anyway, that's, that's all I had, so, um, I, I'll let you guys go. Um, but if you do have any questions, feel free to. Alright, thank you. Hard for keeping you off.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not bad.
Thank you, take care.
I guess this, this concludes the meeting and we can adjourn. Unless there's any other. Let's go ahead.